All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Town Council meeting. Appreciate you following your calendars and reading the emails and knowing that we adjusted from last Thursday to this Wednesday due to Hurricane Milton coming through. So, welcome. If we can please call the roll.
Mayor Breckus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kucinski.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
President.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I would like to have a moment of silence. Unfortunately, we've lost another longtime rancher in the last week. And Caroline Ditzer, Dixon, sorry, was, we lost her, 92. She's been here just forever, I think. And so, we remember her, remember her family, Robin in particular. And if you'll just join me in a moment of silence. All right. So, we have a proclamation that we'll start off this evening with. This is Hispanic Heritage Month.
Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mestre de Herencia de España, is celebrated nationwide from September 15th through October 15th each year. Whereas Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain. Latinos are individuals that are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages. Whereas September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and 18th, respectively. And whereas Hispanics comprise nearly half of the population of the Town of Southwest Ranches and play a vital role in our community. Whereas the Town of Southwest Ranches recognizes significant contributions of the Hispanic leaders and groups that exist to increase cultural awareness, education, enrichment, and community engagement, helping the town to continue to become more culturally diverse and welcoming for everyone. Whereas the Town of Southwest Ranches is committed to recognizing Hispanic, Latino culture and heritage as an important part of its strong inclusive community. Now therefore proclaim that the Town Council of Town of Southwest Ranches does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th National Hispanic Heritage Month and call its observance to all its residents on this, the 16th day of October 2024.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that. We also have a proclamation for Hindu Heritage Month and the Festival of Diwali, but due to some conflicts, we're going to put that off. So, you may see that on the agenda. That will be probably in an upcoming meeting. All right. Any public comment this evening?
We have two tonight, Mayor. First, Jim Lasky.
Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188 Avenue. The other day, at the CEHOA meeting, I brought up my idea of the composting. Then, I was told that the contract was in the way. I've read that contract now twice and highlighted a whole bunch of calculus involved in the contract that I really doubt if the people that are supposed to be able to make decisions on a contract like that, I even understand the math. I sure don't. I'll be quite honest with you. And I invest a lot of money. That's not the kind of investment I would ever make, a derivative. But I don't know why you would try to do that in a town. So, there is a couple of clauses in there where we could pull the vegetative waste out of it. We could use some of the ideas that I had about, before we even pick it up and put it on a truck, to be able to evaluate the pile for contamination, because I think that's the biggest thing that they're beating you on. And they're beating themselves, quite honestly. But it's covered in that contract. No matter how bad the contamination is, they still get paid. Not only that, then they credit you, your franchise fee, that you're not collecting all of it, okay, into the next month. You don't get, you can't take the credit off the current bill. It goes into the next month. And I thought we were all high on getting all that interest from our good friends at TD Bank that now have some banking issues. So, you know, you lose a month's interest. Anyway, that's all I got, but I really think we need to look at that again and get serious about what we're gonna do, because we got a whole bunch of bad guys on all ends in this, this energy thing that we're working on with Broward County, Dade County. There's a lot of money that's working the other way. They don't want anybody to ever do anything right. They just wanna make money. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mayor, next and last speaker is John Garrati.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentlemen. Let me say that right. And my wife, how are you, Loudie? Be home soon. It's getting repetitive. Anyway, we missed a meeting for a storm, but what are you gonna do? We can't control the weather. Some say we can. Some say we can't, right? That's an argument for Facebook. We had our candidate forum. That was an incredible experience. A lot of people came out, incredible feedback. That was a lot of fun. That was, you know, that was a chance to get to meet who you're actually voting for, you know? And it was a very positive experience. I do have to say that we had a lot of questions on potholes lately on Facebook. And I know that none of us own an asphalt company, but that's something that should be addressed. I think we should have, yeah, you can always make a call and call some, but we should have some more hands-on type of, let's fix it ourselves. However we can do that, let's figure that out. Couple of small announcements with my two minutes I wanted to make. We are gonna have a pumpkin festival on the 20th. I know it's short notice, but wanted to get it out there. It is open to any resident in Southwest Ranches. Pumpkin Festival comprises of a bunch of things, but mainly it's for dog adoptions. We wanna see if we can get as many dogs adopted and rehomed for as many families as we can. Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach, a lot of the rescue organizations are gonna be there. It's gonna be at Cielo Farms Nursery. Think everybody knows where that is already, 4680 Volunteer Road. It is an agritourism event. I wanted to toss that in there, just for good measure. It's gonna be great. There's gonna be a lot of friendly faces. There's gonna be a lot of dogs that need to be adopted. So, it's gonna be fun. It's gonna be posted on both of the Facebook pages, and we're gonna send out a bunch of things. I'm directly involved, so there'll be some peace and quiet. There's not gonna be any disruptions. I can promise you that. What else? Let me see, I got a minute. We got a jewel of a restaurant that just opened up in Southwest Ranches. You guys have gotta go check it out. They actually are friends of a friend of mine, the previous owner that was there, Lazaro. Friends of theirs. Hispanic Heritage Month, they're from Hialeah, they're Cubans, native Floridians. Very good food and very affordable. I'm gonna tell you, they are, I call it the Hispanic version of Flanagan's, except for the burgers. I'm missing on that. But very good addition. They've been packed. Let's see how long they can keep that up, but we need to support them. Very good food. I'm gonna be honest with you. You guys will be surprised. I think many of you guys have already visited, but the doors were open. Hats off to Adrian and his family for taking that challenge. It's a big nut to pay in rent, but what are you gonna do? You gotta try. What else? I think that's all I got. Twenty-one seconds left in the clock, right? But thank you, guys, for all the support, to be honest with you, guys. I've gotten support from even my haters, which is funny, but it's cool. It's been an experience. Ten seconds left in the game. I'm gonna leave it to you, guys. You guys have a short night tonight, it looks like, but thank you.
Thank you. All right. Public comment closed. Any board reports this evening? Seeing none, no board reports. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I'll go. Start things off.
Awesome.
Real quickly. I know everybody's in a big hurry tonight to get, short agenda. Save the date, Rolling Oaks Park, June 7th, next year, 10:00 a.m. It's gonna be the town 25th, I was gonna say wedding anniversary, actually, 25th year of our founding. And we're gonna have a really good, really good time on that day. So, I'll talk more about it as we get closer to it. We're several months out. December Holiday Light Contest submissions have to be put in. We do this every year through the Rural Arts Board. They need to be in by the 5th of December. We have Halloween at the barn again, courtesy of Rolling Oaks Civic Association, on the 20th at 6:00 p.m. Bring your candy, bring your table set up, bring your kids, bring everybody. Everybody's gonna enjoy it. Free popcorn, meet your neighbors. It's a lot of fun. Usually, we have about 200 to 300, sometimes 400 kids. So, and we have hayrides and stuff like that going on. There's flyers in the back on it, if you wanna take one of those with you. Just FYI, we have December's favorite event, Water Matters, coming up in March, on March 8th. And December does an outstanding job on that, so hats off to her. That's coming up. We have the Country Fair and Carnival on the 16th through the 20th over at the Preserve. You'll hear more about that as we get closer. We have, oh, the DMV Flowmobile is gonna be MIA for quite a while. It's up in the middle of the state, assisting with the hurricane-ravaged I-4 belt that went through. So, we don't know when that's gonna come back. So, hopefully soon, but, you know, their needs and priorities are higher than us. Wanna talk briefly about a situation that occurred in Rolling Oaks, just getting it on the record, and I wanna talk to, be talking to Russell and the engineer concerning, our engineer concerning, we're getting a lot of animals that have been run over recently. Well, it's been continuous. If it's not a possum, it's raccoons, it's wildlife, it's squirrels, and it's dogs and it's cats. And we just, Happy Farm lost one of their, well, one of their prize dogs, you know, their watchdogs that loves everybody, kinda, kinda deal. And I spoke with the owner, Sherry, and we were bouncing around suggestions on what to do about that. And she was definitely against stop signs and speed bumps, and she elaborated the reasons behind it, which I said, that's, that's the reasons we've been using every time this comes up.
Right.
But there are other alternatives. And one of the things she came up with, which I thought was kinda interesting, was at the front, a block or two in, you know how we have on Griffin Road, the flashing yellow light that shows with the horse sign? We could possibly do something like that with animals, word animals on it, flashing just to remind everybody. Because it's, you know, with the circumstances under which she lost her dog, we don't really know if it was speeder, or if it was distracted driver, or, you know, who knows what it was. Just it came out bad, and she has no idea how the dog got out. You know, it's a watchdog that stays on the property, and she has no idea how it got out. But we'll be taking that up with the HOA, I don't wanna do it through the HOA with, in conjunction with Town Hall and go on to that. We might even possibly put in rumble strips or something like that, just to, you know, they have less impact, but they kinda wake everybody up.
Allergic, right.
You know, so, something that we're, that I may be pushing forward here in the next few days. But I just wanted to get that on record for right now. And basically, that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Gary. Who'd like to go next? Jim?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll go. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask Russell and Rod to help me with this, if they could. You heard mention earlier about the potholes. And my phone lit up this morning. I went around Monday before last, so it's been almost a week and a half, and wrote down probably close to 70 potholes in District 3. And, you know, the neighbors are complaining that they're not getting fixed. I wonder if I could get Russell and Rod to help me address this and what the town is doing to, to take care of it, if that'd be all right. Russell, would you?
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, so, thank you for the opportunity to address this issue. It is an issue that we take very seriously. Obviously, you know, the conditions of our roads, the extreme summer heat, the summer rains exacerbated the problems that we've had throughout the town with the roads. We periodically get reports of potholes, you know, in town, and when we get those, we try to schedule them accordingly. It's not really cost-effective to address every time a pothole pops up. So, what we try to do is get a few of them kind of assembled and then schedule them out. We, this, in this particular situation that's come up as of late, you know, it was exacerbated by the fact that we're at the end of our fiscal year, the start of the new fiscal year. We had Hurricane Milton kind of in the mix there, and a couple of other factors that kind of prevented us from being a little bit more responsive. We could always do better. We're working with our contractor about ways to make sure that they're being responsive to the letter of the contract. So, we are looking at things prospectively. We also went out there basically today. We did another site inspection. I followed up personally and drove around town and looked at some of the conditions of the roadways, and in coordination with, with Rod and our contractor, we were able to get them to mobilize today to take care of some of the more serious ones along Sterling Road. We already had plans to take care of larger sections of Sterling Road, 166, some of the other areas where there, some of the more problematic potholes kinda pop up in town. But those weren't going to be done until next year, because we had to put them in line with the, you know, the new fiscal year. And I know nobody wants to hear about the bureaucratic process, but it is part of our process. We can't just pay a contractor, call him up, and have him come out there, pay him in cash to fix something. So, we have our processes in place, but knowing the severity of some of these potholes, we reshuffle some priorities, had them go out there today. They're actually out there, they were out there right before the meeting, addressing Sterling Road, so we know that they're out there addressing some of those. And going forward, what we're doing to address this issue is, we're looking at, you know, council's made this a priority, and it's something that obviously we want to address this going forward. What we don't wanna do is have knee-jerk reactions to a pothole of a particular, let's say, a smaller size, and then just take care of that one pothole, because it increases our mobilization costs. Every time that they have to go out and address one pothole, there's a mobilization cost. So, we would still like to do, you know, do a few at a time, but if there's one that we find that's of a severe size, then certainly we don't want that to be left unchecked, because that could be a really serious hazard. So, Rod and I have been talking about this. We have a plan that we have going forward to kind of address these a little bit more consistently. So, and one of the other things that might come to fruition is, if we're not satisfied with the performance going forward, is the potential for looking for an additional contractor or an alternate contractor to perform this work.
Great.
I guess, you wanna, are you still gonna talk about that? Because I have a couple of comments on that as well.
Yeah, Russell, thank you for that. And they were out there this evening, when I come this way, they were on Sterling Road. They got a three-man crew out there with the cones and stuff set up. But just to let the residents know that the town is working on it, and the potholes are reported, and like you heard, bureaucratic red tape to get them done is, you know, is what we have to face, and it's a shame. Go ahead.
Thank you, Jim. I'm wondering if, it seems like during the rainy season, we should be on like at least a weekly schedule to do potholes. So, if we were on a weekly schedule during rainy season to do potholes, and if we were, I don't know, it's every two weeks or twice a month during the dry season, it's certainly not as bad. And then figure that during the year, we've got 12 big issues where we just gotta go out regardless. I wonder if we can do the equation on that and see what that budget would be, and see if we've got that in the budget already, or if we need to do some sort of an adjustment to our budget? Because I think that's kind of the schedule. I don't know what, I know you're working on a schedule. I don't know what that is, so, you know, maybe along those lines, maybe something totally different. But I think we need something like that, so that it's, we know we're gonna go out every week. We may not know yet which potholes we're gonna fix, but we know every week we're going out and we're gonna fix it. We're gonna get the town back squared away again.
Yep. No, I think that's a great approach. We'll certainly develop that a little bit further. Obviously, the biggest contributor to the potholes is the rainy season.
That's why every week during the rainy season.
Right. But it's also very difficult to mobilize, because it can't patch the holes during, you know, in a rainy, in a rain event. So, it's a challenge. It's a little bit of a cat and mouse game, and, you know, the potholes start small. We don't wanna send them out for a small pothole, but if we don't address it in three weeks, that small pothole gets larger and larger and larger. So, it's a challenge. But something that we certainly, we can do better on. Certainly, Rod and I have discussed this ad nauseam, and so, we definitely are developing something to help address this, and I agree with you.
Yeah. And listen, it's not just us. You know, when I drive home on Griffin Road, which is a county road, not a town road, there's some major potholes on the county road as well that need to be repaired right now. So, it's, it's...
Yeah, and our challenge is also, I mean, you know, just to add to this and not to beat, you know, to beat this issue down, but the challenge is, some of the other cities surrounding us have their own public works crews, and, you know, we can, they can be dispatched the same day when they notice something. We're working with a contractor that has other work that we assign to them as well. This is a priority for them, but so are stop signs that are down and other, you know, things that we assign them to. So, it's a, it's a challenge to try to address these things promptly all the time.
Yep.
I got a question for Russell.
On the same topic?
Yeah, on this topic. So, Russell, they may say, "Not our job," but Davey PD covers every mile of our roads on a daily basis. You think it's possible to have them fill out a form if they go over something that's significant enough that they notice it? That way, you've got a constant stream coming in, and maybe we get ahead of it. Jim said he, you know, he drives his area regularly. I think I've gotten five pothole complaints in all the time I've been on the council. I think I've probably reported it as many times as well. But, you know, they're out there all the time. Maybe this is something that we could ask them to keep an eye on for us.
Not, not a bad idea, but we also have staff that drives around all the time, and they report to us. Our residents are pretty good reporters, too. You know, they let us know when there's a pothole. So, we do hear about them. The issue is trying to coordinate them in a manner so that it's cost-effective as well. Again, we don't wanna mobilize our, our crew or our vendor to go out there and address one pothole when it's more cost-effective for us to do a few at a time. So, we do ask for people's patience. I know it's not fun, and especially at night, it can be a hazard. During the day, it's a little easier to see and avoid, but at night, it can be a hazard. So, we're trying to, we were trying to find that delicate balance between being prudent with the town's financial resources, but at the same time, we also don't wanna let this thing go to the point where it's an emergency now, or, you know, a severe hazard, a driving hazard. So, we're working on that, and like I said, we can do better, and we will do better.
Thank you, Russell. Jim, thanks for your indulgence.
Thank you, Russell, and thank you, Rod. Like I said, it started early this morning, and I think it'll get fixed this evening. One quick other thing, the Rural Arts Board has a, I'm gonna steal a little bit of David's thunder, the lights for the houses. We're gonna go around and judge those, but we're looking for a pumpkin to give the award. Santa Claus gives the award out for the Christmas lights, so we gotta find a pumpkin to go around and give out the awards for the Halloween house lights. So, if anybody wants to volunteer to beat a pumpkin, let me know. That's all I got, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. David?
All right, thanks. All right. Thanks, folks. It's nice to see everybody coming out tonight, especially on a Wednesday night. I only have two items. Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board has the spooktacular Double Double Toil and Trouble Fireburn and Cauldron Bubble.
Nice.
That's from Shakespeare. The Halloween Yard Decorating Contest. Deadline to register at your home is this Friday, October 18th. We already have seven entries, and so, we're gonna have some competition. Judging is gonna be October 1st, and awards are gonna be given the 25th, October 21st?
You said October 1st.
Judging is October 1st. Judging October 1st, awards on the 25th.
21st, right? October 1st was a couple of weeks ago.
October 21st.
Thank you. Now you said it.
Oh, I said October 1st? All right. Thank you for correcting me. October 21st will be judging, and then the 25th will be the awards. And like I said, we have seven entries, and it's gonna be a great, great event. And then lastly, the National Flood Insurance Program has issued its community rating system, and I wanna give a big shout-out to Rod and his team. Second year in a row, we got our Class 7 rating, and this report is gonna be sent to the Department of Homeland Security and FEMA, considering our community rating for flood insurance rates. The Class 7 rating ensures that Southwest Ranches residents will get a 15% discount on flood insurance, which should be automatically recognized by your insurance agent. Thank you, Rod and your team.
Yeah.
Hard work for us. That's it for me.
David, real quick, make sure your agent, you tell them about that. Sometimes they overlook it, but make sure you do that. Broward County says that it's, that, you know, if you mention it to them, they have to give it to you. But just make sure that you ask for it.
Bob? Yeah, I heard an interesting statistic with Milton coming through. Only 17% of Floridian homes have flood insurance. That's a shocking number.
It is a shocking number.
I mean, living in a swamp, it's an automatic for us.
I thought that was mandated by the state that everybody had.
I would've thought if you have a mortgage, you have to have it.
I know my mortgage carrier requires it.
I thought they changed that, that everybody had to have it.
Clearly not.
I don't think so.
I carry it.
Yeah, obviously. Only 17%.
So, I just wanted to do a pitch job for the Rural Arts Board. They produced a calendar again. It's one of the best Christmas presents for people that still use real calendars, and I always have one up in my office. You know, every year, they pick the top 13 photos, and then they have honorable mentions. The cover photo this year is great. Good pictures tell stories. So, I'd encourage you to take a look. Plus, there's a lot of, we all talk about our pets, our dogs, all those sorts of things. And I think Debbie Green submitted a photo that says it all about Southwest Ranches. It's a hog.
Michael.
Walking down the middle of the road, all right, Michael, Michael Green, Mike Green. So, they're available now. The honorable mentions are in the back. They got a good selection this year. They're always lots of fun. I believe they're five bucks apiece, still the same?
Five.
So, yeah, best deal in town. That's all I have tonight. Everything else has been covered.
Great. Thank you, Bob. I just have a couple of things as well. First one, just a reminder that early voting starts on Monday, so if you have not already voted by mail, please make your way down there and avoid the, avoid the crowds later on. And then the last thing is, this coming Saturday, we are having, you know, each month, we have the Mayor's Chess Challenge, where we open up this, this particular room. We have all the chess boards out there, and our residents, either from in-town or outside of town, come. But on this coming Saturday, we have actually invited, there's, the challenge moves from city to city, town to town, throughout the county. And so, this Saturday, we're hosting all those other ones here at this location. So, we should have a big group, and we're excited about that. And so, if you've been thinking about coming out and just haven't made it yet, this would be an awesome one to come out to. So, I just encourage you to do that. It's always a lot of fun, even, even when an eight-year-old...
Kicks your butt.
Yeah. When you lose to an eight-year-old. But occasionally, you can beat an eight-year-old, and that's, that's a glorious moment. So, so, it starts at 10:00 in the morning and goes till 2:00 in the afternoon, and it's, and it's always fun. So, I encourage you to come on out for that. All right. Any legal comments this evening?
Sorry, Mayor, no legal comments tonight.
All right. Thank you. Any, Russell, any administrative comments?
Yes, I have a few. Yes, I have a few. So Mayor, you said that occasionally you get to beat an eight-year-old?
Occasionally, not very often.
It hasn't happened for me yet. I'm hoping for that to happen the next time. Just a couple of things real quick. I did want to make everyone aware in town about our solid waste extra cart fee. So for those of, of the residents that participate in that and have requested and paid for an extra cart.
Is your mic on?
Is my mic? I'm sorry, I'm turning, so that's why. It's on, I'm just turning away from it.
Okay.
So just wanted to address everybody about the extra cart fee. So we had over 300 residents that, well, I shouldn't say 300 residents, 300 carts that were purchased as part of the program to get an extra cart. So for some residents, they got two, some people got, you know, two extras. They, we, we were charged initially, or they were charged initially, a $312 for that extra cart. As part of that, it was always intended that that would be an every year fee. Unfortunately, last year, you know, for, there was an oversight, I'll just chalk it up to that, where we did not charge people for that extra cart. When I became aware of that, I met with our town financial administrator. We worked on a process to make sure that that doesn't happen again. So we have a process in place, a procedure in place to ensure that that doesn't happen again. And we're going to be sending out an invoice and a letter explaining what happened. We're not trying to backcharge the residents for last year, but prospectively going forward, anyone that chooses to have that extra additional cart, we do want to charge for that going forward. So this year, you'll be receiving, for those of you that have the extra carts, you'll be receiving a letter explaining what happened, explaining the cost for the extra cart for this coming year. It's $312 again this year. That could change in future years based on indices. And so we'll be sending a letter along with an invoice to those people. So we just wanted to put it out there in case anybody gets this letter, they don't know what it's about, that's what it's about. If they have any questions, they can call Town Hall, ask to speak to the town financial administrator if they have specific questions, or myself, if they have questions, we can be, you know, more than happy to answer those. Yes, Mayor?
And if they find that they no longer need the extra cart, they can return that back in, right? And then they would not be charged.
That is correct. They would not be charged, that is correct.
Good.
All right. So I wanted to address that. Couple of other things.
Russell, before you move on, the, the cycle is October to September, right?
Correct.
So people would expect to be receiving that letter anytime now?
Yes, we'll be sending it, we want it to wait until we had this discussion tonight. Actually, we were planning on doing it last week, but we pushed because of Milton, so the letters will actually be going out tomorrow.
Perfect.
That is correct. Emile, tomorrow?
That's what we're planning for.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The last thing I just wanted to mention was I plan on bringing forth an item for next week for a discussion on the ARPA funded projects. So this week, in your emails, you'll be getting an email from me explaining what we've kind of planned for before, some revisions to the plan, but a proposal to spend the entirety of the ARPA money that the town received. We want to spend every single penny that we've received for that so that we can attribute it to projects. And just one project associated with that will be, we'll be bringing forward next week, the award of the contract for the restroom building at the Southwest Meadows Sanctuary Park. So we had the bid openings yesterday and we want to bring the award to Town Council next week at the next meeting. Okay? That's all I have, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you, Russell. All right, item number 10.
Item 10 is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to create a new section of the town code entitled Meritless Code Compliance Calls, providing for a service charge as a penalty for more than three meritless code compliance calls, providing for penalties, providing for inclusion in the town's Code of Ordinances, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. I just want to say a couple of words about this. This is something that comes directly from resident input over the years, to be honest with you. And that is sometimes, not very often, but sometimes code is used as a weapon between residents that for whatever reason are not getting along. And they, and, and so we can generate code complaints that have no basis but are a hassle to deal with and it ties up a lot of our resources from code when they could be doing, addressing real complaints. And so this, we understand that there are some situations where things happen by mistake and that's why there's some grace period here. But if, if you go beyond that, then there'll be a, a charge associated with it of $250 for the, a meritless one where there is no basis for it. If after that, there's another one that is, does have a base to it, that is, that is justified, then there's no, no charge for that. But it's just the meritless ones after that in a 12-month period. So this was, this, I think this is something that, you know, it's important for us as a, as a town to make sure that our resources are used in the best possible way and, and there are better ways to resolve issues between neighbors than getting code involved if that's all it's about. So that's, that's what this particular ordinance is proposed to resolve. All right, any council comment on this before I open it up? Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, we say here calendar year, three within a calendar year. I would say three within 12 months, the prior 12 months. Because I'd hate to see somebody skirting it, playing games with it by recording two as soon as the calendar flips.
Mm-hmm.
They got another two on the docket.
Right.
I don't put it past some of the people that have been doing this.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I guess, I guess I would want to just double check with Julio first. I know probably a little bit more administration to keep track of that.
I'm just wondering, yeah, how to get track of that.
Yeah, maybe a little tougher to keep track of.
But yeah, it could be abused, you know.
He's giving us thumbs up.
Yeah, you could have three right before and then three right after, you got six in a row.
Look, look back at Julio. He's giving us thumbs up.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay.
Good. All right, so we're, I'm, I'm good with that change?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Bob, run that by me again. You're going to ask for...
What, what it says here? What it says right now is...
Three in a year's time, calendar?
No, no.
Let's use the correct words. In a calendar year's time. So January to December.
Right.
What I'm saying is within 12 months. So if somebody doesn't play games with the calendar.
Because right now, somebody could do three in December and then three in January, six, six in a two-month period and it...
Got you.
Yep.
I understand, got you. Okay.
Yeah, we have, if I could chime in for a second.
Sure.
We do have, you know, situations where there's ongoing code, code wars for, I mean, we've got one instance where there's over 100 calls that were false.
Yeah.
In one situation alone, over 100, that these guys had to answer to.
They have to answer every one of them and investigate every one of them.
And investigate every one of them. And it, I mean, that is like absurd. I'm not going to mention names.
No, no.
But it, that is totally absurd. That's how, that's one of the reasons that this is being brought out.
That's why we need it.
It's not just one, it's occurring all over town.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, I think this is, this will put a halt to it, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Some of the abuse.
Very good. All right, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. If you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Item, item number 11, please.
Item 11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City providing water services to 6541 Melaluka Road, real property lying within the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town. Providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on the item? Seeing none, public session closed. If you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item passed.
Thank you. Item 12?
Item 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the City of Cooper City providing water services to 13100 Laray Road, real property lying within the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town. Providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the City of Cooper City and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I got a little interesting question.
Yeah.
This is at, this is at 131 and I have a resident that lives right at the crossroads of Hollatee and Laray, Mohaniff. He has his water from Sunrise. This, I think Sunrise's water is much more closer than Cooper City's could be for, to this guy's property. I don't know if that was taken into consideration.
I don't know either. I don't know either. It's a great point. And actually, it brings up a, a bigger point that, I mean, that's a, that's a great point, David. I don't know, I don't know if that's been reviewed or not.
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if Rod had any coordination on this. Did you have any coordination on this, Rod? If you can come up, I'm not aware that...
There's a dead, there's a dead end pole right at Hollatee and Laray.
Interesting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Sorry. So we, we always advise that there's multiple locations to get water and they basically do the research and find out for themselves. So you're, you're correct, there's a service from Sunrise that is on Hollatee and Laray right there. So the, the address is 13100. And so I know you have also on Sterling and Melaluka is Cooper City. So they're both relatively close.
Sterling and Melaluka is very far.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's like 2,500, 2,600 feet one way and like 24, 2,300 the other way. It's relatively close. But we, we give them the option, they choose where they want to get it from.
Is it like a coin toss?
Honestly, I...
It's their choice. Yeah. Thank you, Rod. It does bring up a great, a kind of a larger picture though. I've, I've discussed this in the past, but let me bring it up now just because it's exactly what David's talking about, is I've asked Russell to try and pull together the communities that are around us, Pembroke Pines, Davie, Sunrise, to be able to have a, a global discussion on putting parameters around where, in Cooper City, where water should be coming from. Not that we're going to force anybody to do it because we're not, but to be able to set up a larger plan to say, if you live in this area, this is where you should go. Because eventually, just the way the world is working, eventually we're going to need to get water through saltwater intrusion and other issues. It's going to become an issue someday. And so it's better to do the planning upfront and so we're trying to get all these entities together so that we can set up the boundaries because these are coming in, you know, single pipes, but if they are going to service an entire area, they're going to set up a system where the water can come in from more than one direction because, you know, water breaks happen and things like that. So, so it's, it's, it's a bigger project.